No Paul today?
No Paul today, the other player, their baby.
Oh, good for them.
Alright, thanks for coming out, we're gonna call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberate and just as strong.
Alright, we'll start with the approval of the agenda, any changes or corrections, Dan?
I have none.
Ryan, anything?
Can we change the admin report A I two to northeast park module? We're not putting one in northwest.
Oh, sure, sorry about that, that's my fault.
That's the first time I've ever caught anything.
You had to bring it up, you couldn't just tell them before.
Mel, anything? Okay, anything else to add or change, no? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that one correction.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Ryan, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, thank you. Consent agenda, questions or comments for administration on the consent agenda? Entertainer motion to approve?
I like that motion.
Thanks Dan, a second?
Second.
Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, thank you. Um, public forum, we've got one card, Mr. Norrie.
Thanks for letting me talk to you guys, my public comment is about how the city informs the public on what the city's doing. Um, the city does not post any news on the city website to inform citizens on what the city is working on. There's a lot that the city's working on. The city does not post upcoming events, news, or use the city's website to inform citizens on public concerns such as a new ordinance. The city does not use Facebook to post what's going on with the city. The city does not use Twitter to inform citizens on what's happening in the city, and most cities do. The city council, the city administration, the fire department, the police department, if there's an event going on, everybody posts on Twitter, except you guys. The city does not encourage public engagement or provide in any way for citizens to get involved, other than to allow for public comment, which is what I'm doing. The city does not allow for citizens to participate in city meetings through Zoom, most cities do. The city council does not have bylaws or a code of ethics that most cities do, that boards and council members agree to upfront. Um, the only place to get, uh, city news that's going on in the city castle is with the DCI Independent, and they do a great job, and I'm really glad that they provide that service to tell the community what you guys are doing. Can the city do a better job and inform the public on what's going on? Could you guys do consider trying to consider any of those ideas that I gave, or a better job doing that? Tonight will be the first opportunity many residents will even hear about the new fence ordinance and the neighbor contract agreement being required before you build a fence in Carson. And that is only because of the things that I said, the city isn't telling anybody what they're doing. The city has not been transparent and honest with the public over the past four months regarding the sole reason for the new fence ordinance, which is the neighbor contract agreement requirement. That's been hush-hush. That requirement, uh, being before building a fence and notarized, notarized with the deed of your property. No one knows about that, that's been kept secret. So, please stop misleading the public and telling them the changes mainly relate to lower fees and faster process. No city does that, no city just automatically says, hey, we love y'all, we're gonna lower those prices on this because we decided it was too expensive. No. The sole main reason for changing the fence ordinance is the neighbor contract agreement requirement. Please do not vote on the fence ordinance tonight, as there are many unresolved issues that relate to the neighbor contract access requirement prior to building a fence that will result in issues if left unresolved. That's my request, that you don't vote on that tonight, and if a vote does come up, I ask you, Mayor McCurn, to veto that. Unless all issues are resolved and you don't see that there would be any upcoming issues that hadn't been addressed. That's all I got, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey Jerry.
Onto our first public hearing, the liquor license for the Kickback.
Yeah, including your package, you've got information regarding, um, the restaurant slash, um, bar that'll be providing alcohol. You could see the background information from the police department, um, you know, we don't have any issues with it, so we recommend approval.
Okay. Any comments, questions from council?
I know Paul had asked it before, but are we at our max then for a number of licenses we can give out in the city?
No, I don't think so, based on the interpretation we have with the food part that they're doing. So, we looked at that and it was, it's solely liquor sale, so if you had just straight bars, then it would be a little bit different.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Question, right. Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing, if anyone has any comments regarding the liquor license at the Kickback down Main Street. Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Dan, or I'm sorry, Mel and Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Onto the next public hearing regarding the fence ordinance. Uh, before we, what's that? Oh, yep, sorry, I'm trying to...
No worries.
About all my protocols for public hearings here.
I can check these off.
Yeah, if you want to check them off for me, yep. Let's make sure I don't miss anything. Okay, so the fence ordinance, um, anything from planning, is only Dan, you guys have recommended this?
Yeah, we recommended it to come forth and there was a few questions, you know, but everybody basically agreed, there's always gonna be a couple of concerns, but there was nothing that the committee didn't think would, you know, we had wanted to move it forward, it was good enough for the...
Okay, does anybody else have anything before we open the public hearing?
Just wanted to ask, we're moving it from three feet away from your property line to two, so we're giving that extended extra foot?
Yes.
Closer to your property line, so for people that want to be a little closer, they can be towards the property line without needing a CUP, correct?
Yeah.
And actually, that might be prudent to go through some of the changes.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll just, um, go through some of the changes here. So, I'm just going through the specific proposed ordinance changes. So, starting off with some definitions, um, just key point there is to designate between an interior fence and a perimeter fence. So, the interior fence would be anything at least two feet from the property line, and a perimeter fence would be anything, um, on the property line or within that two feet. And so, depending upon what type of fence someone wants to build, that would determine, um, what the requirements are, what sort of permit they would need going forward. Um, and then moving forward, section B talks about general standards. Most of those are carryovers from the current ordinance, um, just a few, um, changes to the language to revise, make it a little bit more clear, but conceptually the same. Um, and same for the section C, which talks about front yard fence standards, those are pretty much the same. Um, let's see. And then getting into the section that talks about approvals and permits, um, that's where we make the distinction. So, with interior fences, um, you would need a fence permit, but only if it's within like a utility or drainage easement, or if you're putting some port of it in the, in a front yard area. And so, the reason for the permit in that case would just be to acknowledge that you're putting it into an easement, same with what we've been doing with the CUP process. Um, just an acknowledgement that if the easement has to be utilized, it could be removed at the owner's expense. And then, the second one, being in the front yard area, that's to, um, make sure that the transparency requirements are met, or if it's in a corner lot, then if they're meeting those site triangle requirements. Um, let's see here. And then we get into the section that talks about neighbor agreements, which in the current, um, in the current ordinance, they're referred to as, it's referred to as, um, an access agreement. But now, we're, I'm proposing to change the language a bit to a neighbor agreement, because in certain situations, what's proposed under this ordinance is that um, access might not have to be granted, only if you're building a perimeter fence and the duties of construction and maintenance are going to be shared between the property owners. So, this is a bit different from, um, the current system where, um, if someone's putting up a fence, the access is required as part of that agreement. But, um, for the access to be required now, it's only when one person or one property owner is going to be constructing and maintaining the fence, if that makes sense.
One thing, just to be clear, is that the city does not negotiate those agreements, that is between the neighbors.
Yep.
What we're providing, and what we do provide, is an agreement that has been vetted by our attorney, that is an optional agreement. If something else is able to come up with that's recordable, that's something that we would allow other neighbors to, to create.
Yep, so, everything that we would want for the agreement is spelled out there, so it talks about, um, maintenance of the fence itself, and specifically about any area that's between the fence and a property line, so like the lawn, um, that's specifically mentioned in here as being required. So, and like Tim said, the city does provide a draft version as a courtesy, but it's important to note that, um, someone could submit their own version, so long as it meets the requirements. Um, and it would be included as part of the permit application, so there would be some review there. But, just, just because, um, people might want to get their own, uh, legal advice from their own attorneys, they could do it that way as well. Um, let's see. And then, just about, um, non-conforming fences, uh, I just wanted to say that, um, if the ordinance gets approved, that any fence that is currently illegal would remain illegal under the new system. It's just, if a fence is legal right now, so if it has the CUP approved and the, all the agreements in place, it stays that way. They don't need to, like, get a new fence permit for their retroactive fence approval, if that makes sense to you.
No, the temporary fence that did not...
Oh yes, and the temporary fence, um, the current fence ordinance does talk a bit about, uh, temporary fences, but the distinction here is that if a temporary fence is erected for more than forty-five days, then you would apply for a fence permit, whereas otherwise, you could just have it up for forty-five days during calendar year, and that's it. So... And, let's see, can talk about the, the application, or the draft application rather, to go with the fence ordinance. So, basically, you just go through all the sections, read the information, um, to help you determine what kind of fence you're applying for. So, I've included the proposed fees to go with each type, so one hundred dollars is proposed for the perimeter fence, and fifty dollars for an interior fence. And the reason for the difference is just because with a perimeter fence, it's gonna require more staff time with the, with the agreements and that requirement. Um, and then, moving into the section that talks about neighbor agreements, anyone who's applying for this fence has the option, so they can use the supplement B form, which is the, um, city drafted as a courtesy version, or they can, um, attach their own versions. Um, but it does have to be recordable, so anything has to get signed by all the property owners involved before a notary public. And that's helpful, because if properties ever change hands, then it becomes clear, um, to the new property owners what's, what's being required of them, as far as the fence goes. Um, and then talking about the fence plan, um, and property lines, um, we don't, we don't currently require a survey, um, and that would more or less stay the same. You could always get a survey if you wanted to, just to make sure you absolutely know where your property lines are. Um, but if not, um, you could also elect to locate them yourself, but you assume responsibility for it if they do end up being in the wrong place. Um, or you could attach a notarized letter from your neighbors showing that you agree to where the fence line location, or the property line location is. Um, let's see. And then, other section talks about fence material, that's mostly to, um, get the transparency figured out, so that we can apply the, uh, ordinance appropriately. And then, let's see, supplement A is the fact sheet, um, I just put this together because it's, um, these are like the most commonly questions that I get asked about the fence permits, so um, if we put this up front, then maybe people will have, um, some of those questions answered right away. Um, but of course, we're always happy to get, um, answer questions as they come up. And then, supplement B is the neighbor agreement itself, the city drafted version. Let's see. So there again, it talks about maintaining the fence in addition to any lawn area between the fence and the property line that may exist. So, if someone were to choose on the application form, um, to use the city drafted version, um, really the responsibilities would just be to, um, change the highlighted part, so it's pretty simple stuff, like names, addresses, PIDs, um, legal descriptions. But if anything else wants to change beyond that, then it would be up to the applicant to get that figured out with their neighbors, because like Tim said, we're not going to negotiate beyond that. Alright.
Okay, questions for Ian?
I didn't think about this until just now, so otherwise I would have asked you a while ago, because we've had a lot of emails on this over the last four months. No offense.
I was following the temporary.
That's temporary, yes.
But if you put it up in November and you don't take it down till February, that's past the forty-five days.
For a calendar year, so your forty-five days starts over January first.
You need to take it, so if you put it up in November, you need to take it down by mid-February, technically.
Forty, well...
You get forty-five days each calendar year.
Okay.
So really, you have ninety days.
It, it, it really did not come to my mind until you started reading things off, and I thought to myself, I have seen neighbors, because we live next to a farm, that puts snow fences up. They have them on their property within three feet from the farmland, but they're, they're a fence. So, I didn't know, I don't know if we have to, I don't want to have to charge someone to put a snow fence up, I think that would be illogical to charge someone, but...
I mean, we could look at tweaking that, I guess.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
You think, uh, I mean, I guess would, would sixty days be enough?
Sixty days per calendar year.
I don't, yeah. Some people, most people don't put up a snow fence, but it's not meant to block your neighbors, it's to reroute the snow away from areas around your house. You know what I mean?
Excludes snow fences. Or do you want to exclude snow fences, Ian, is that be better, would it be better, more direct? Now, if you do have an issue or conflict with a neighbor and the snow fence gets left up around then, you know, which we don't want that.
But there's gotta be a way to, I mean, if you actually use a snow fence and we get a lot of snow and the fence does its job, it's gonna be buried in the snow.
Right.
And if we have a cold winter, you may not be able to take it out till March.
April, it's like, obviously, spring.
You put it up last year, you're taking it down whenever you want it.
Yeah, every year's different.
Yep.
Uh, let's see.
So, we just have it go within our time limit for, we have alternate site parking, no way? No, that's matter of, sorry. You can say once the snow ordinance is in effect for plows, just have it same time as that?
Sure, I think where we, I think we're November fifteenth through, uh, April fifteenth, or something like that.
Leave your snow fence up while that's happening. Yep.
Yeah, it's all set up for snow fence and not temporary fence around your yard.
Most, most snow fences are like lattice shaped, so I don't think it would be an issue. They're more to block the snow than they are to block your neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know, where do you think that would fit best, Ian, in the, in the new ordinance?
Um...
Sorry, Ian.
Well, we did talk about it a little bit.
Ask that question.
I know. And think of it that way.
I've been watching your guys' little meetings, because we've been talking a lot about this.
We did talk about it.
Yeah, section G talks about temporary fences.
I'm trying to read where it would best fit.
You'd have to maybe put it under...
It's an interior, right? It would be an interior fence, I would assume.
Yeah. Um... Let's see.
While you're considering that, Ian, maybe we can have our public hearing.
Yeah, or if there's other questions that we want to answer before.
Okay.
Okay.
There'll just be, there'll be a mechanism where we can get the snow fences up from November fifteenth to...
Yeah, yeah, we could do that.
Alright, with that, uh, we'll open up the public hearing, um, everybody knows how that works. We've got about ten or fifteen minutes tonight for the public hearing, so who wants to go first, we'll open up the public hearing? Norrie?
The proposed one-of-a-kind fence ordinance requiring neighbors to enter into a fence contract agreement that is notarized and filed with the deed to all parties' properties before building is outrageous government outreach and lacks any good cause. The city is outright lying to the people by saying fence issues between neighbors is the reason for the requirement of a fence contract with your neighbors before building. No documented cases, there's nothing, you guys, anybody has said really happened. You've said this could happen, but nothing that's really happened. No one wants to enter into a fence contract to build a fence. Any contract for a fence agreement or easement or encroachment between neighbors needs to be reviewed and approved by an attorney, not just the city staff and not just the city attorney. And as it turns out, people can write their own, so somebody's gonna have to review them. These are legal documents that are binding upon future property owners and are substantial. By placing the requirement of a neighbor fence agreement prior to any building, most people won't be able to build at all. And everybody's gonna have legal expenses to go talk to their attorney. The proposed ordinance has no plan B, for if neighbors simply don't want to get involved in a fence contract agreement, but have no issues with the fence, whether they're an out-of-state investor, somebody who's just like, it doesn't benefit me. Basically, neighbors have nothing to gain and only liability issues for entering into a fence contract with their neighbor. There's no benefit to them. Nobody wants a fence, fence contract except the city planning and zoning board, which did not vote, it did not have a consensus, and left the meeting with questions. There was no agreement, normally they vote on something, they're gonna recommend it to you guys, they didn't vote, just want to make that clear. After four weeks, the planning and zoning board, working on a new fence ordinance with the help of city staff and a hired paid consultant, the planning board is not in agreement on a new ordinance and does not, did not vote. Please to tonight discuss the problems by requiring a fence contract before people could build. Okay, please discuss the legal cost to the city and to have a neighbor fence agreements negotiated, because if there are changes, somebody has to negotiate that, and reviewed by city staff and the city attorney, that's a waste of public resource. Please discuss why the city requires a two-foot setback. There's been no explanation of what this two-foot setback is all about, other than you're supposed to cut your grass. Okay, what are the exceptions to that rule? Okay? What if there's trees and established landscaping in the way? What if there's a loss of use of your property by setting your fence back two feet? Please be clear that the city will not force any person access onto another person's property, regardless of what any neighbor fence contract agreement states that you guys approved and you guys pushed on the people. Please be clear that in the ordinance, that the police will never get involved in any neighbor fence issues, uh, enforcement issues of any easement. Okay, it's not the city's business, okay? Please address homeowner insurance liability risks involved with implied consent by providing access to a neighbor's property. There are issues there, you guys, with insurance, with implied consent. If you let somebody onto your property, you're covering it when they fall down and get hurt. So, if someone gets injured on your neighbor's property, that's, that's an issue that's not addressed, okay? Please address, uh, that the contract, any neighbor contract terminates if the fence is removed. Um, please add a hold harmless clause to that. Uh, please state that it only applies to current owners, this isn't some agreement you can push on to future homeowners down the road. Please only put in that agreement that licensed contractors with insurance can access the neighbor's property. And please, most importantly, put in bold print on the ordinance that the city recommends that people seek legal advice prior to entering into any fence contract or easement or encroachment. Please recommend to the people to get legal advice. That's what I have for right now, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. I'm gonna check off that. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, further discussion?
We have put countless hours into this, over a hundred twenty hours of staff time for this fence ordinance change. That's an absurd amount of time for them to have to spend on something that has not been an issue for the last three years. I've watched the planning and zoning meetings, I've sat here for three years. We put a lot of time and effort into supporting people to get their fences approved. I've had one person in three years tell me the fence costs were too high, we're lowering them. We've had one person say they want to be closer to the property line, we're changing that now. If you put a fence up, you can't access your two feet you have left behind the fence to do anything with besides mow or concrete. But if you don't put a fence up, you can access that. If you put your own fence up, you're blocking yourself from accessing the feet you're talking about. Um, I, I feel bad for how much time you've had to spend on this. It's absurd. Um, but I appreciate the work you've put into it. I think we've really tried hard in planning and zoning, and within our city departments, to help create something that works a little better for people. Okay, and I, I don't see anything wrong with it the way it was, but now it may be better. It's not worse, it's better. And I think that's our continual goal, is to continue to make things better for our citizens, not make them worse. We're saving people money, we adjusted the permit and the rules. You can still build a fence without your neighbor's approval, up to two feet away. If you want access to that two feet, don't build your fence, then you have access to it. So, I, I don't see the concern there.
Thanks Ryan. Mel, anything? Nope. Dan, anything else to add?
No, I think we've said it all.
Okay.
We've been working on it.
Alright, um...
I just want to reiterate in the, maybe we'll just go through one more time that RCA that's in your packet, so the key points here, we're not gonna require a CUP. Um, it's gonna go through administrative approval, um, that's gonna speed things up, and that's one of the goals.
Mm-hmm.
Due to that reduced staff time and the reduced cost for us, not having to publish it, that will help us, uh, by being able to reduce that cost of that quite a bit down for the folks in town here. Um, those recorded agreements will still be required, but they're gonna be between neighbors, that's a neighbor agreement, the city doesn't desire to have more involvement than is necessary. Um, and we are reducing that dimension down, as you mentioned, from three feet to two, to allow for folks to, uh, be able to, you know, maintain that part of their fence. Um, so just want to reiterate, those are the changes, really, the biggest changes. And then Ian, uh, I think there's some language, Ian, do you want to just update what that would add to G there?
Oh, yes, so, the, the G section, temporary fences regarding, uh, snow fences specifically, we would add a sentence that says like, uh, a properly erected snow fence shall be exempted from the forty-five days in a calendar year provision, we'll say, yeah. That works.
So, we would look at that as an add to the, the current one that you have in your packet.
Okay.
When you're saying properly erected, are, can you make sure you stayed in there that it is for snow fence purposes, so somebody doesn't put a snow fence up as a fence?
Yeah, yeah, properly erected, snow fence.
I think that's what I, we kind of looked at it, properly erected, because if we were, if it was not erected for those purposes, we would view it to be properly.
I just want to make sure that it's clear.
Yeah.
The snow fence isn't permanent.
Yeah.
And that may be something else to add at the end of that, would be the snow fence is not permanent. So, that'd be another thing to add on the end of that sentence, I think, Ian, if that makes sense. So, why don't you read that again?
Sorry.
A properly erected snow fence shall be exempted from this section, the snow fence is not considered a permanent fence.
Yep.
It cannot be considered a permanent fence.
Cannot be considered a permanent fence, right.
Okay.
Cause I...
Nope, you know, and there's always that one issue that comes up, if you don't plan for it, you do the best you can, and if there are things that come up, we're always willing to tweak it again if we need to.
And I do know that planning and zoning, you know, when you're talking about, the whole reason, part of this reasoning of changing this ordinance to the two-foot instead of the three-foot, is you can still mow on that side, and then it gives you a bigger yard.
Yep.
But we couldn't, we couldn't... But we couldn't, we couldn't go any less because you gotta be able...
So in other words, it still allows you to maintain your yard.
Yes, without stepping into your neighbor's property. Because once you put the fence on the property line, now you're on both properties. And if you don't have a survey proving it, and then stayed in, so that's why where the neighbor agreement comes in.
And all of this helps with documentation for in fifty years, when there's four homeowners later, and someone goes, "That looks like it's on my property." We have documentation of all of it. 'Cause that's what's happened with sheds and garages and other structures in town.
Now, you wanna say something?
Well, now that you've changed the ordinance, can you reopen the...
Yeah, I'm gonna do that in just a second.
I'll close it.
I closed it when you were, when nobody else said anything, I closed it.
Oh.
Because now that we've talked about a change with the snow fence, I'll reopen it so we can hear more. Yep, thank you, Jerry.
Well, we don't have to reopen the hearing, but he can certainly bring a comment up, if you want.
Yeah. I'll reopen the hearing for anybody that has on this last, let's finish our discussion first here, though. Anything else? So the snow fence ordinance, part of it. Ryan, just say, okay, I'll reopen the public hearing. Jerry, you had something you wanted to say?
Okay, Jerry Berg, 506 Fifth Avenue Northwest. I don't know, Ian, did you make a picture, print a picture?
I didn't print a picture, but, um, let's see. I'll figure something out here. I'll put it in Dropbox.
Okay, the snow fence brings up an issue that I brought to, I sent some information to the administrator and Ian, on a fence that is currently on our common line. Looks like a snow fence and could very well be a snow fence, and now you're allowing that to be an extended situation. I don't agree with that. So you can look at the picture when you get it.
Yeah, and he'll bring it up.
And that's forty-five days per calendar year? I guess I don't remember seeing that in the ordinance necessarily, as a calendar year.
If it's an interior fence, it still has to be three feet away, correct?
Well, now, two feet in the future.
Two feet in the future, yes.
The picture there is not a snow fence, that is ribbon, or...
No, but it could just as well be a snow fence.
That is...
Well, I wouldn't consider that to be a snow fence, so that wouldn't...
No, it's not.
I wouldn't consider it to be allowed to be...
It is a temporary fence, which you're putting the snow fence into the same category, is a temporary fence, which would be basically the same thing, only it'd be looking worse.
We're specifically segregate snow fence for snow fence, not with other temporary fences, correct?
Right, that's why it's got...
But even if you put the snow fence in there, you're creating another category, which creates the same situation.
What kind of fence?
Open that up a little bit so they can actually see that.
Are you looking at the yellow or the pink, or are you looking at the structure?
Yeah, all across the lot line here.
Sorry.
Seventy-five feet, there's three ribbons of pink ribbon, and there's two strings on about twenty-five poles. Yeah, but, you know, say it that way, I don't mind if it's kind of a jolt in the neighborhood, but it looks, looks kinda crappy.
Uh, try to... Just zoom in on it, Ian, that's fine. I mean, basically, there's some posts in the ground, and it's got some yellow, um, plastic...
Surveyor tape.
Surveyor tape holding it together.
Yep, yep.
Trying to get folks to see there. I guess, I don't consider that to be a fence at all. That, to me, is something we wouldn't include, is something that's legal.
Read the definition, the current definition of a temporary fence.
You wanna read the current definition of the temporary fence, Ian?
The current definition? Um...
Norrie?
So in the current ordinance, it says, "Fences erected for the protection of planting or to warn of construction hazard or for similar purposes shall be clearly visible or marked with colored streamers or other such warning devices at four-foot intervals. Such fences shall comply with the setback requirement set forth in this chapter. Temporary fences shall not be erected for more than forty-five days."
Doesn't say calendar year, does it?
That's in the current one.
That's the current one.
The new one, it says calendar year.
I don't think it changed, does the new one say calendar year?
The new one...
Is it?
Does say calendar year. So that is a change.
But I mean, this would still have to be two feet off the property line.
Yes.
Right, that's what I'm, so, I mean, what I'm saying is like, if somebody wanted to put that up two feet off their property line, they could. And we can't stop them from doing that, but they can't put it on the property line.
Right.
Right.
That's the way I would interpret it.
Yeah.
Doesn't apply to the snow fence, I don't think. Not a snow fence, and as long as it's not two feet in, yeah. Seems like it follows all the other stuff that was just mentioned. As long as it's not two feet in.
Does anybody else have any comments while I still have the public hearing open? Norrie?
Okay, the biggest change in the new ordinance, as I see it, I'd like some clarification from you guys, is, well, one of the biggest changes, is you are now requiring this neighbor access agreement to be done before any building. So to clarify, that's a substantial change, because before, that was only required after people built the fence, and then the city was only getting about half of those back. So I think that was one of the leading factors, because the access agreements weren't coming back later, 'cause people didn't wanna do them. So by changing this to make people have to do this beforehand, right now, a third of the people aren't doing it in the first place. So I think you're gonna create one heck of an issue there. This does not solve any property line disputes, Mr. Christensen. You had mentioned you thought this was gonna solve future property line disputes, it does not. Neighbors could simply put the fence in the wrong place, a survey could be done ten years later, and there is a fence problem. 'Cause they're gonna go with the survey, or they're not gonna go with what two neighbors agreed to, because this permit does not require a survey. So it's just basically what the neighbors think. So it could cause future problems, it's not gonna solve any property line issues if there's not a survey required. The only other thing I do have to say is that I believe that there's also a conflict of interest of having both Mr. and Ms. Ferris, Ms. Ferris, yourself on this board, and your husband on the chair of the planning and zoning board, and he was the leader, claimed the author of this ordinance when it got passed the first go-around. So I'd like to ask you to abstain from voting, if there's gonna be any voting on this issue tonight, just so there are no conflicts of interest, because I know that the city attorney has mentioned that there's not any conflicts of interest, because you know her very well. And I trust you, you know that her character is solid, but, you know, to keep the household happy, I believe that both people should vote together.
Can we just keep it to the...
Yeah, we'll keep it together. So that's my last thing, I just would like to ask you, if you'd please abstain from voting on this tonight.
Just to the ordinance and not people.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Could you clarify why there is no conflict of interest, please?
Yeah, it's not, because I know you very well.
Right.
But it's because that I don't believe that simply being married to the, to another member of the planning commission creates a conflict of interest. I've reviewed the statute. Nothing that he has brought up brings, rises to the level of any kind of a conflict of interest, in my opinion.
We talk about conflict of interest at our new council seminars, I've gone to every one the last four years, and one of the questions is always, if you have two married spouses on council, it's still not a conflict of interest, as long as they don't have discussions about council activity at home. You're not, they're not both on council, so there's no conflict of interest here.
Okay.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yep, you got it just in time before I close the public hearing.
My personal feeling on this whole fence issue is I think you should scrap it.
Thanks, Jerry.
Just don't have one.
Thanks, Jerry.
With that, we'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion by the council? Question? Okay. I will make the motion to approve the fence ordinance as changed. I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time. Thanks for putting together a very easily understandable ordinance, and hopefully it will serve everybody in the best interest. Committee report, planning commission, Creekside Grove preliminary plat.
Actually, just before we jump into that, I apologize, I should've known this before, I wanted to introduce Sarah. She's our new finance person. She's been sitting through this public hearing, so, Sarah, thank you for coming, she's doing a good job, she's hitting it hard. And if you wanna leave, Sarah, you can do that now, so, go ahead. You do not have to sit anymore. She is, she's in the office, she's been doing a great job, so, thank her for her work there. Sarah, nice to meet her. I don't...
Yeah, very good.
She got a wide open to the world of city council, so...
Okay, Creekside Grove preliminary plat from the planning commission. Ian?
Yes, so we did have a public hearing for the proposed preliminary plat of Creekside Grove at the planning commission meeting for this month. I'll just bring up the exhibit here on the screen, so we can all see what we're talking about. So this is a property owned by Schuylkill Enterprises, generally located between Highway Fifty-Seven, Mandible Avenue, and Eighth Avenue Northwest, and then kinda south of the county transfer station, and the future Sixteenth Street Northwest. So, yeah, it's a rather, rather large parcel. You can see it's being proposed to be split up into a number of outlots, although won't be nearly as many as what's being displayed here, based on recommendation of the city engineer. But basically, the intent behind this subdivision is to allow the property owner to sell it off to future developers for development. So as well, outlots, nothing would be immediately developable after a plat is approved, they would have to go through their individual plating processes, and then rezoning as well, at a minimum, so. There weren't a whole lot of comments about this, basically just the one condition of approval, that the city engineer would be able to receive any updated materials as may be necessary to pass this through, which the city engineer did supply those comments to the applicant's representative, so, so that's what we've got.
Questions to anybody on that? It's a good thing to move forward, I believe. Helps developer get it sold, that'd be awesome, so, all right. Any else, anybody?
The planning, zoning, when they looked at it, the only question they had was on the streets, and that was answered, that they are lined up and they've been approved. That was the only question that was brought up.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add? Okay.
And it speaks for itself.
Yeah, and it's pretty straightforward, and I think it's the next step forward, so, I'll obtain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Stan, do we have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Administrator's report?
All right, a couple things tonight. Thanks, Dean.
Thanks, Dean.
I appreciate your time on this. The state budget, the state budget looks like it's an average budget, which is good, their collections are average, so we're hoping that that means that the LGA, the local government aid, is steady for 2025. Park and Rec, we had a really good meeting, covered a lot of items. You can see the numbers there from the aquatic center, we had a little bit down this year with some of the weather in June, it was pretty wet, as you know, and we did have the new aquatic park over in Rochester open up. So we're looking at some new fund generating ways to look at that aquatic center, hoping to start some adult classes there, possibly some, you know, water aerobics or things like that, and then looking at maybe utilizing the pool a bit more for the rentals, for pool parties, that sort of thing. The League of Minnesota Seas Insurance Trust, as you can see there, they did vote to decrease the average rates by six point five percent. So I have been starting to figure that into our budget, so we'll also lower the budget a little bit here, trying to be conservative, so looking at about a five percent savings for us, because even though the average rate reduction would be six point five percent, we have a rate increase, because the new fire hall is, is at a much higher level than the previous one was, so it kinda balances out a little bit of that. But if we're looking at about five percent savings, it'd be about a little over seven thousand dollars, so we're happy to be able to cut that back a little bit. Chamber of Commerce, you could see that there, had a good event for Oktoberfest, well-received. The planning's begun for the Christmas in Carson, so that's gonna be good there as well. We did have a little issue with that Northwest list station, I've kinda broken that out for you there. And then we're also looking for feedback on the electronic utility billing. For a lot of folks, they still get that bill in the mail, so looking for feedback from council on what you'd like, if it's, you know, if you think we could look at doing credit for signing up electronically, and also possibly doing a charge for the paper billing. A lot of the banks do that now, a lot of businesses do that, they do a charge. Obviously, we'd like to kinda, you know, be able to do the positive, give them a credit, and that would be a great way to encourage them. So we're looking at maybe doing that in the new year, where we say, "Hey, folks, you can get a ten dollar credit to your bill if you sign up for the e-billing." The other nice thing is, those folks, they'll get that e-bill right away. I mean, they'll get it when it's issued, instead of having to wait a week in the mail. So for some folks who have concerns about how long I have to get their bill, it'll be a little quicker for them, so...
I just worry about people that don't have access to internet and charging them extra.
Sure.
Maybe giving that...
Well, that's been a concern for us, too. So that's kinda like, we kinda have both sides of it. So we're thinking, you know, if we can give people a credit, that might be the best incentive. You know, we do think that it's a better process if they get the bill a lot faster, so that's kinda what we're...
Instead of charging to get a paper bill, incentivize people to get the electronic.
Exactly, I think that's what a lot of businesses do, when it comes to paying bills online, so...
That's what we're looking at doing. So I think if the council is amenable to that, I think we're gonna offer that in January, like I said, if that's okay.
I think so, if it reduces costs in the long run.
Yeah, and it should.
And it's more efficient for...
Seems like the stamps go up every month, almost, just about this, you know, I think. Anyway, so, okay, well, so we'll look at doing that, then. So that's what I've got in my memo, there's a couple other things I've got in my packet there. You can see the new modular, so this was something that Parks and Rec folks talked about, and it doesn't include all the different items, there's gonna be a couple other items that'll be included, but this'll be going out at that northeast park. So we did order that now, to take advantage of the reductions in cost. Would've been, we're saving about twenty-seven thousand dollars by ordering that now, instead of ordering in January, and the rates go up as part of a special. There are a couple other items I've gotten there, too, just to show you, and we had, Joe was here from the fire department last, last meeting to talk about the fire relief. I received this from the state's auditor's office, so it shows the performance of their fund over the last twenty-year period, so I think it's very clear that going with the state investment board was a, was a good decision. You can see the annual rate of return there is right around four percent, and then in the last year, it's actually spiked a bit, so I think that they definitely weren't gaining the return they should've been doing. I have a meeting scheduled with Joe next week to talk about that issue, about the request for the fire relief increase.
Could that relief be chunked over the next three or four years? Just 'cause one of the concerns last, at least last meeting, was, is this just a one-time rate increase because we switched, and it's gonna come back down? Could we chunk it to get to that number they wanted?
Sure, I think that's probably one of the suggestions I'll have, but after I have that meeting with Joe, we'll have a little better feedback for you. I think, you know, as the mayor mentioned at that meeting, it makes sense to be more conservative, knowing that the drawdown from the portfolio has a big impact, and could have an unplanned liability for the city council and for the...
If we don't do it all, yeah, if we don't do it all at once, then it doesn't have that big drawback from it.
That's right. And then I think the other item in there is maybe the fire relief as well, so, so anyway, just some items on that. Otherwise, I just have a couple other things to put out. Appreciate folks in town, this year's been much, much better, both lawn signs, with the political season hot and heavy. We've had a couple, people have called with concerns, but way fewer than four years ago. Just a reminder, those have to remain outside of the, of the city right of way, so, for the most part, people have put them in the right spots. And then the historic state flag, so the last time we talked about this, the plan is to expend that supply of historic state flags we have in inventory before we make a transition over to the new flag. If council would direct us, otherwise, we can do that, otherwise, that's our, that's our plan right now. So the last thing I have is that the counties let us know that they are planning on passing that cannabis ordinance for the county later this year, probably in December, and that they are indicating, they believe, state statute says that our ordinance can be no less restrictive than theirs. So it may be that some of the things that we were talking about earlier this year may be controlled a little bit by the county. For example, if they set distances from schools and things like that, it may be that For example, if they set distances from schools and things like that, it may be that we're required to meet their criteria and that we don't have the ability to do that. That's what their, that belief is from state statutes, that they can control that for the entire county. So we can be more restrictive, but we can't be less restrictive. So anyway, just a couple of things I wanted to update you on.
Two things, going back to the paper billing versus electronic billing.
Sure.
If you explain in the newsletter that comes out with the bill that this is why we are asking people to do it, I think you might get a better reception from some folks who might otherwise be reluctant to switch from paper to electronic.
Sure.
And then secondly, you mentioned the campaign signs. The ones that are over the culvert there on 57, is that city property?
The culvert, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking...
There's where the creek goes under 57 between Hardware Hank and Train and Child.
You want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that the Mindot right of way there bumps out to essentially allow Mindot at the time to construct the culvert. So I'm guessing those would be on Mindot property. If Ian Zooms in there, I think he'll be able to see that on the map there farther south. Now, why I know Mindot right of way to the city corridor is another question. See where it bumps out there. Mindot typically does that where they'll bump the right of way out to basically be able to construct culvert. So they have a little additional right of way than a traditional highway corridor.
So then I assume that the campaign signs that are there on the culvert belong to Mindot?
I would, I would think you're probably, you're being facetious.
Think they have it there?
No, I'm sure they're not Mindot. And I guess I had looked at that property line, so I mean, we constantly let the folks know they need to move the signs off that area.
But then if it does get in Mindot right of way, then they're responsible.
Yeah, I mean, that's true. It isn't city's right of way, but...
If it's not our right of way, we shouldn't be telling them.
And I don't care. I just was wondering if that was city property.
Sure, no, I mean, based on this, it looks like it is in the Mindot right of way, so...
In the past, Mindot's had people drive 57 and they collect the signs and either bring them here or to the police department. Because then people call me and ask where we took their signs. Well, we didn't take your signs. State took your signs.
And I'm not saying if it's not on city property, then it's not our job to remove them. I just wanted to clarify whether or not that was city property or private property or Mindot property.
Well, I appreciate the question. It's a good question. It looks like it's in Mindot.
Oh, I know.
So one thing, I appreciate that idea about the newsletter. The other thing we'll do is we do put up on, we will put up on Facebook. I will say, we do try to communicate through public via social media as much as we can. I think we do often get many comments back, so I know that people do see that. So I think putting it out on Facebook that we're incentivizing people to switch over to e-billing will be something that will, hopefully people will appreciate that. So I will make sure we do put that out in the new year. So thank you very much for that.
Any other questions for Tim? Okay, thanks Tim, appreciate it. On to the engineers' report.
All right, well, thank you, mayor and council. Starting to kick off your special assessments for our planned 2025 construction projects. Very highest level, what we're going to discuss tonight. This is the first step in the assessment process. Council's pretty familiar with the assessment process. I always like to remind them how they, how they kind of get developed. This will be the first step to call the assessment on, excuse me, call the hearing on the improvements. So let's thumbs up, thumbs down the project as a whole when we have the public hearing with the citizens planned for November 22nd, or November 20th, excuse me. So if there's any comments that the council has tonight on the way we assess or the REUs that we have, because Southwest Reconstruction has some different REUs, which is residential equivalent, which we've done on past projects, but it's always a discussion for non-residential property. So would like to maybe focus on that attention because if we're going to change it, I'd rather change it now than as opposed to later on with, when we have a public hearing with the citizens. So we are ultimately, again, planning for a hearing on the improvements on November 20th. November 26, having an informal, so just being an open house, myself and staff to go over individual property concerns with the project and then move into bidding and then have a final assessment hearing after the project bid likely into the 25 season, our 25 calendar year, and then construct within the 25 construction seasons to plan. So any questions on the process as a whole? I know we've done it with 57 and Third, Fourth and Fifth and whatnot. So I'll jump right in. So the first one, Southwest Casson Reconstruction. There's a feasibility report in your council packet there, just stamp preliminary. If I want any comments, I'll finalize after our discussion tonight, and then I'll be official at that time. So I'm not going to go in depth on here because it's only kind of pretty straightforward. But again, I would like to talk about the REUs, which is that pretty little map on sheet four there. So this area, Southwest Reconstruction, this is part of our bonding bill project for the flood control project. This is ultimately the area north of Highway 14, west of Highway 57, south of Veterans Memorial, and then west of our park area there. This is a full reconstruction, so going to start over, reconstruct all the utilities as part of the project. Existing conditions there talks about the reason why we're doing the project. Driven by utility concerns, this is some of the sewer that Public Works has to maintain on a pretty frequent basis, fair amount of water main breaks, the street's in pretty tough shape. And we've had some flooding in that area, the storm sewer's inadequate. We have cross gutters, which are concrete gutters that drain across intersection. Nobody likes driving through them, so we're going to add some more storm sewer to pick all that up so we don't have that cross drainage, which ultimately results in quick pavement deterioration also due to the poor drainage. So proposed construction is pretty typical, replacing in all the utilities, rebuild the road per city standards. Street right of way easements noted there. Nothing really interesting there. It's all implied at street right of way. Permitting's pretty straightforward. Opinion of construction cost, see we're looking at 25 construction cost, about 5.7 million for the project, total project cost that we got estimated currently. Recommended schedule, we are planning on this again in 25 construction season. Per city policy, in past practice, we've calculated the special assessments at 30% of the total roadway reconstruction cost to the benefiting property owners. We are recommending a REU, residential equivalent unit, because Southwest is generally, a majority of it is residential, and there's some commercial properties we'll talk about here in a bit. From there, it talks about the total preliminary assessments to be collected, 486,000 based on, again, that 30% in assessing it REU. So total preliminary assessment for each REU would be about just under $10,000 at $9,950. Given we want to review that, talk about that, because we want to change that before we present to the citizens we'd like to do that. Schedule again, hearing on the 20th, neighborhood meeting on the 26th, and then in time, we'll wrap the plans up, receive the bids. With the bid amount, past practice, we've set the amount to ultimately assess the property owners in order of the final assessment hearing. In the final assessment hearing, we hear the individual comments on their assessment at that time, and then you as a council have the right to adjust the, adjust the amount of the assessments if you choose. And then we would award that contract, begin construction, again, construction at 25. Jumping onto the map there on sheet four, everything in purple there is one REU, residential equivalent unit. You can see some greens in there, those are two REUs, those are the apartments along Highway 14. That's our cell for our parkland, kind of in the north, which is more of a parkway. And then there's the church off of First Avenue there behind Subway. And again, this is our staff just kind of recommending us as we kind of say, well, if that church goes away, could you put two houses there, three houses there, what's the residential equivalent unit? Obviously, something to discuss at the council level. And then we have the large old ShopCo building there, which is about Plaza 57 now, along with their parking lot. And it takes up over a full city block there, so we have that at eight REU. And then we have Casey's there. Currently, we have that scheduled for six REU, again, thinking, what's the residential equivalent unit? How much frontage do they have? How big are their services and whatnot? So the other two apartments there, that is actually a private road backing up at the creek there, so they're not currently assessed because they have their own street to maintain and sewer and water that's stubbed into that site. So looking at that, you could make an argument they used that road to get there, but generally we've only assessed houses that have received direct sewer and water and road improvement, so...
Is that the one on Fourth and Third?
Yeah, yep. Third Avenue and Fourth Street. The two duplexes there are not highlighted.
Do we, do we have to reconstruct their entrance to their driveway?
We may have a short five-foot section, just the tiny end of the sidewalk, so I think it'll be potentially difficult to show some benefit there for not constructing in front of their houses.
That's fair.
Because they have their own kind of infrastructure to maintain. Not really shown on this map, but behind Third Avenue, the extension of Fifth Street, that's city parcel back there behind there's houses, so we are looking at constructing a stormwater pond in there. If I remember, I mentioned this is part of our bonding bill project, that part of the money that we received included reducing stormwater discharge in Madison Creek, lower flood elevation. So we are ultimately planning to build a pond in that backyard. We'll work with parks, it's not really used for much back there. We are looking at making sure there's a berm, so there's a trail to kind of connect where it says preliminary only, back down to the south to those apartment complexes, so we can still sneak through there. Furthermore, at the end of Sixth Street, it's not really shown on there, but planning on building a cul-de-sac for plow turnaround at the end of that dead end. So that was one of Public Works' requests to get a decent turnaround in there. Does kind of stub out in the parkland there, so we might have some opportunity to talk about maybe parking there. I know they got the disco, of course, there. We do have a lot of parking on the other side of the creek too, which is connected, but I think that's a conversation we need to have with Parks Department, so. I'll come back to that. Continuing on through the report here, we have the construction cost broken up in the street, sidewalk, sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, and the pond there total. We have some contingency engineering administrative slash finance cost for a grand total there that goes 5.7. And then do have a preliminary assessment roll shown in there. We don't necessarily need to have that done, but we ultimately calculated and covered our numbers, so I just assumed, put it in there. So yeah, I'll pause there. I'll ask the council if they have any comments on the REUs. Again, that was produced by myself and our staff to kind of come up what we thought was appropriate, but I know opinions, and I don't vote. So if you have an opinion on REUs, you think we're too much on certain properties, because obviously an eight REU at just under $10,000 is going to add up pretty quickly. And ultimately, it's a special assessment, so we should have to have the benefit of the property value. Commercial land may have more value, may have more increase by having new sewer and water in streets, but that's part of the process we have to go through. So any questions, comments, concerns on where we're at or directions moving forward?
It seems consistent with the past projects in the last seven years. So I'm, I don't have any concerns with the REUs, like you have them, so.
Yeah, I did mention, you know, that the 90, 99-50 there for total cost, I think we were 7,600 on Third, Fourth and Fifth for assessment. So, you know, it was in 2017, so we've had a fair amount of years of inflation. Mindot just said their projects over the last three years have gone up 26%. So we saw it on 57, and those assessments were more. Little bit of unique projects, I don't know if I want to compare those two, but just if you project that inflation out, we're pretty close to the, that number just as a, what's fair, right? Same thing with percentage, it ultimately is going to come to that same sort of percentage of the cost, so. That's kind of in play. I don't know that I want to go over $10,000 a house, but I don't know that we'll be there. We'll see when we get bids.
Anybody else got anything for Brandon on that one?
Just one question for you, Brandon. For that one, the old ShopCo building, on the north part, you know, you got the road going out on the Second.
Yep.
With that pond there, that's not buildable, so that would be the only concern, you know. I mean, would you still be able to get eight in there even with that stormwater pond?
Yeah, I would say everything, from their parking lot to the north, their stormwater pond to the east, that was actually delineated wetland when they constructed ShopCo. So you're right, that area there, we actually, there's actually two separate parcels there.
Okay.
So we looked at assigning that a certain number, and then the facility itself or the business itself a different number. We combined them into eight.
Okay.
We probably assessed the building to the south. Same thing would apply, if you can apply that principle of in the flood plain, not buildable, not a lot of benefit, right? You could apply that to the west side of the city of Casson lot over that parkland lot. Same thing, it's not buildable, but we didn't want to go down the road of scratching city property from there. We could have a, we don't assess anything in the park off the cul-de-sac. Is there benefit to the city to have a cul-de-sac in there? Maybe that too goes over there, because we have to be a little more conservative on our side of things too, on what the city's picking up.
I just thought that question would come up, and that's why I'm asking now, just to make sure.
Yeah, I think to your point, you're absolutely correct. I think it would maybe, the Plaza 57 building itself, is it warranted in eight? You can see it's over, you know, it's a block and a half almost for what's buildable in their parking lot. There's a second business on that parcel, so I think that, a fair consideration or should be considered.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Okay, anybody else got any questions on that one? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution calling for a public hearing on improvements to Southwest Casson Construction. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's Ryan, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And the next one.
All right, very similar. This is a project that, I guess, we or staff are calling the 2025 Street Utility Improvement Project. It's going to be kind of our catch project. There's going to ultimately be, I think, four schedules. Schedule A and B that's in the feasibility report, but also likely lumping in the DNR trailer we got some funding for, and then the Legion parking lot potentially, but those are not going to be special assessed, they're not part of the report. But when the bids come in, I think we're going to have all four of those schedules together, just a heads up on that. So Schedule A, that Second Avenue Southwest from the railroad tracks up to Main Street, Third Avenue Southwest from the railroad tracks up to Main Street there. Ian's got the little areas highlighted there. What we're looking at doing in that area, there's minimum storm sewer in there. There's, I think it's been called Lake Casson, I've heard, with the water sits there. North side of the railroad tracks, we're looking at extending some storm sewer to ultimately drain those two streets kind of back up to our storm sewer up in Main Street. So we're going to include that. We're going to replace all of the pavement. We'll have some spot repair of the concrete. We may have to switch out some driveway aprons and that, but not a full reconstruct, because there's not a lot of utilities in that area. So it's more of just a street-heavy project and storm sewer-heavy project. Pavement's in real rough shape. Whenever we have poor drainage in that area, pavement does not last with water sitting on it. That's road building 101, so you learned something tonight. City staff had a couple monster patches in there. They've done a good job patching, but that costs us money too. So the direction is to improve the drainage, get the water off the pavement and rebuild the street. So that's what we're looking at doing with Schedule A. Schedule B, Ian, if you want to go to that, that's Eighth Street Northwest from 12th Avenue Northwest to Eighth Avenue Northwest. That is kind of being driven by water main. We have some ductile iron water main, which we don't currently use, and I think we have some hot soils, which means corrosive soils that eat through that ductile iron water main. We've had a fair amount of water main breaks in this area. So we're looking at replacing that water main and then replacing the pavement itself, keeping most of the curbing gutter in place as much as we can, just to help reduce costs because the sewer's in really good shape, it's PVC. The more modern material in that subdivision's not all that old. So again, that's just a water main and street improvement. So similar to Southwest Reconstruction we talked about, that's proposed construction. Opinion of probable cost is shown in there, about 557,000, including engineering, administrative costs or finance cost. And then again, per city policy, looking at assessing 30% of the total roadway reconstruction cost of the benefiting properties. And what we're proposing to do there is ultimately 48,600 for Schedule A, 118 for Schedule B. We do show a same schedule as the Southwest reconstruct, because we figure we'll have the hearings on the same day and kind of get the, get the assessment process rolling. One thing to note on Schedule A, that is a, you know, heavy commercial downtown area, we are proposing to assess that per foot, because it's just a street project, there's not sewer and water involved. So we have a per front foot proposed for Schedule A in the downtown area, again, Second and Third Avenue. So that is about $82 a square foot, excuse me, per linear foot, and then corner lots at 100, or at 100% of the front and 50% of the side yards. And that can be somewhat subjective on what's the front and the side, but generally, it's where the business fronts, the front of the business. And Schedule B, since that's 100% residential, we are planning the residential equivalent unit there, and there's no real kind of discussable items, because again, they're all generally the same sized lots, so we have them all as one REU. With that said, cost estimate's in there, preliminary assessment roll's in there. We'll obviously adjust the assessment rolls as we go through the final assessment hearing, and that roll will be sent to the property owners. And as similar to the last project, approving the resolution, we will send notices to the And as similar to the last project, approving the resolution, we will send notices to the property owners, put in the newspaper and have that public hearing on the 20th.
Okay. Questions for Brandon on this project?
Eighth one is street, it's really needed. I drive that every day, it's a busy one. And then, Tim, you had talked about behind the Legion with some thoughts on pickleball.
Sure, yeah, that section in between the law office there and, I don't remember the other business there, but the city-owned lots there.
The EDA one.
That's something that Brandon's going to take a look at and see if, what we could squeeze in there, and if we're paid in any ways, if that would make any sense at all, so.
Have we ever looked to see if the EDA would want to do something in conjunction with that, since it might bring in some people to the community right there? EDA, it says EDA, right?
What do you have in mind, Ryan?
I don't have anything right now, I'm just wondering if that's something they might ever like, hey, if we're going to pave this and we're going to make it have pickleball, could we use that space too for something? I know it's for sale, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think part of the reason, I think, and Dan's on the EDA, and obviously Ian's here too, I think part of the reason we're looking at for pickleball is that we're concerned that it probably becomes kind of a unsellable lot. You know, when the building was demoed there, excuse me, there is some sort of mitigation that would be required in that site, and it's currently in a TIF district that owes to the city about $80,000, so it's probably never going to be repaid, part of the demolition cost, so it seemed like this might be the best option, would be to utilize it as a possible recreation item. But I'm interested to see what those costs would look like, Brandon, so.
Yeah, I think that was the direction I was going to present some cost to pave it. We should talk to Parks too, because the last pickleball court, I didn't even help at all, staff built the base, we just paved it as a quoted project, I think it was, and then staff installed all the facilities, so we can have that conversation about what they're installing. Looks nice, so.
Definitely requests for that.